Seven board members. There is also a small, a very small school districts on occasion will have only three. So five to seven, though, is the typical number of members that would serve on a school board, often referred to as a Board of Education or the Board of Trustees. When you are elected, so if one of you were to be elected this November for a full term, you would serve for four years. And even though the election occurs on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November, you don't become officially seated in office until the second Friday in December, which is December 9th for this particular year. So board members serve four-year terms. The only exception to that rule can be if someone is appointed. So for example, if you had a trustee who was one year into their four-year term, and they resigned, and then the school board appointed someone, they would have to stand for election, not at three years when the term would be ending, but for the next regular election, which would be only one year later. So general rule, when you're elected, you serve four years, but if you're appointed, it could be a shorter period of time. The next thought I would just throw out again for context here is that there's a statute in the education code, which is this multi-volume, you know, book that controls our educational system. It's full of all kinds of technicalities. And one of them is that school boards will have what they call an annual organizational meeting. And that meeting has to occur within about a two-week period in mid-December. So generally speaking, what happens at that annual organizational meeting is one of the first items of business will be the election of officers. So it's not defined by law which officers a school district will have. Most have a board president and a clerk. Some have a board president, a board vice president, or a board president, board vice president, and a clerk. So that can vary from district to district, but as a general rule, boards will typically have, let's say, five board members with a board president and a board clerk. There's also no particular law on how long someone serves in that position. So let's just take the position of board president. So you're going to have this organizational meeting each year. And in some districts, a board president could serve longer than one year. And in other districts, they have a protocol where the board clerk steps up to be board president. The point really of the conversation is it's just up to the school board. So you can devise your own system, and you'll have the annual organizational meeting, and you will then elect folks every December. Then the final concept that I wanted to throw out, just as a context again, before we discuss the California Voting Rights Act, is that board members serve staggered terms. So everyone is serving for four years, but you'll be elected on different cycles. So for example, let's assume we have a five-member Board of Trustees. You might have three board members who will be elected in the 2022 election. The remaining two would be elected in the 2024 election. That could also be reversed. But the point of that is so that you don't have all five board members going off the board potentially at the same time. So that by having staggered terms, you keep some institutional knowledge and continuity. So with that as a context, let's go ahead and go to our next slide, and we'll talk about what are the election systems that are available for school districts. So this graphic that we put together is designed to show what we call at-large voting. So if you look at the black dots, those are your board members. And notice they can be anywhere. In fact, in the upper right-hand corner, we have two black dots and two board members living right next to each other. The blue dots are intended to represent registered voters, and they can live anywhere within the district boundaries. So when it's at-large, all trustees are elected by all of the voters in the district. So you get to reside wherever you want. All right, so let's go to the next slide. Now, when the California Voting Rights Act became law, and this is a state law that went into effect a number of years ago now, what the law essentially says is that if you have an at-large system, that you may be engaged in racially polarized voting. And so someone can sue you and say you have to change the way that you elect your trustees to move from an at-large to a bi-trustee area election system. The law is very complicated, but we're not going to get to that level of depth today. But just know that back after the 2010 census, several school districts in the county moved from at-large to bi-trustee area. And then when the 2020 census came out, and that was released by the federal government in about mid-2021, and a number of other districts moved from at-large to bi-trustee area voting. And they did that so they didn't have to pay a lot of money to people trying to sue them, claiming there was discrimination because they used an at-large system. So let's go to the next slide. So this graphic is intended to show how a bi-trustee area election system would work. So example, in trustee area one, we have the one trustee. And notice there's a boundary now. So we've taken the district, and we've divided it into five equal parts. And those five parts are population-balanced. So now the trustee who wants to represent area one must live in area one, and only the voters in area one get to vote for that trustee. Same thing with areas two, three, four, and five. So now we have a new rule with respect to who gets to vote and where, as a board member, you reside. So if you happen to reside in the boundaries of trustee area four, you can only run for trustee area four. This is bi-trustee area voting. So districts that have moved from at-large to bi-trustee area voting are no longer at risk of a California Voting Rights Act challenge. All right, so let's go ahead to the next slide. How does this process work? In very summary form, you hold a number of public hearings. The board ultimately hires a demographer. It looks at different maps, and it decides this is the map we want. When it's finished that process, it sends its resolution with its preferred map to what's called the County Committee. And the County Committee on School District Organization is sometimes a group of 11 folks, and sometimes it's actually the County Board of Education. That varies from county to county. But what the law requires is that that County Committee hold a public hearing, and then either say, you know, thumbs up or thumbs down to that district's change in election process and map. So generally speaking, the County Committee will uphold the district's request to make the change. And then board members still get to finish their terms, but now we've moved from at-large to bi-trustee area voting. And then the other big-picture thing to know here is that every 10 years, when the census comes out, you go back and you do this process again. And the idea is to ensure kind of the one person, one vote rule, so that each of your trustee areas, be they five or seven, are population-balanced. So in 2030, when the census data comes out, it will be released generally by April of 2031. And then sometime during that year, the board will hire a demographer, look at its population, readjust its map. Now notice the external boundaries of the district don't change. It's only the trustee areas within the boundaries that change. All right, so that's the process with respect to the California Voting Rights Act and a little bit about how school trustees are elected and their terms. So let me just stop there and ask the panel if any of you want to comment. I know that several of your districts have been through the process of changing from at-large to bi-trustee areas. So Don or anybody else, do you want to comment on what your experience has been here?
I'm going to just, anyone considering running, the first thing you'll need to do is check to see what trustee area you live in. If you're in a trustee area. If you're in a trustee, if you're in a trustee area that has an open seat, because you may live in a district that doesn't have that seat, particular seat where you reside may not be open this year.
So could you just take your share screen off for a second there? Ellen, thank you. It'll keep your slide in its place.
And I'll just share it. Lucia Mar, this is the first year we're actually rolling out and rolling out our trustee areas. We were a hybrid district, which meant we had trustee areas, but we still voted at-large. This is going to be interesting. This is the first time that I don't get to vote for my colleagues because my trustee area is not up in this election cycle. So we have, so we'll see how it goes. It's, yeah, but the process itself was, it's a number of meetings to make sure the public has their input, and that we've done our work, and that we're looking at all the data to make sure everything is balanced as possible. Did you just switch to?
Well, Jessica Dero is still at large.
Yes, that's correct.
And we did have some school districts that were served with papers and moved forward by, with the trustee areas, as well as, I believe, two cities in the county faced the same thing. This is all public agencies, not just school boards.
And in doing our research, we didn't find that we had a, we could make a minority-majority district necessarily, so we weren't at risk. But it didn't stop us from, it didn't stop the attorneys from suing us. So this is still a sort of proactive step.
Just because you wouldn't lose in court, wouldn't mean it wouldn't cost a lot of money.
At least it could cost probably 30 grand.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
And probably more, right?
Yeah.
So it can be, these lawsuits are, can be very, very expensive. So a lot of public agencies have switched over.
There's a question for legal counsel. What happens if no trustee candidate runs in a specific area?
It winds up being declared a vacancy, and there is, there's provisions in the government code. So as school districts were regulated by the education code, primarily, and then secondarily by the government code, but then other codes as well. And this particular section, 1770 of the government code, basically says when there's a vacancy, then the school board has a choice. And the school board can either make an appointment or call a special election. Special elections cost money and take time, so most school boards just would appoint a person. And they go through a process. So generally speaking, if you've got a vacancy, whether it's because nobody ran for office or you had someone resign, and you want to make an appointment, typically speaking, school boards will put information out on their website. They'll go to the local newspapers. They'll start kind of getting it out in the community and ask for people to run and, or to put their names up for appointment. And then they'll be interviewed by the board and then appointed.
There's a second question that says, does the appointment have to be in the trustee area that is vacated?
That's an interesting question. It depends on how far you are. If the, if the movement is from at-large to bi-trustee area, it's possible that you could still be in an at-large, that that particular trustee area was still elected at-large. So there could be an appointment at-large. But without making this too technical, as a general rule, I would answer that question, yes, the person who's appointed should be from that trustee area because the board itself will want someone who's going to be there over a longer period of time to create stability for the board. And people who are going to be appointed to the board, it takes so long to figure out how to, how to do this job well that you wouldn't want to be appointed and then, you know, have to go out automatically because you didn't reside within the boundaries of the district. So from a very practical perspective, both from the perspective of the person being appointed, as well as the school board itself, it's best, and sometimes legally required, that the person who's appointed be in, be a resident of the trustee area where there is a vacancy.
Any other questions?
My question is about the date that they determine your residency as far as your district boundaries. Some people, I go, care so deeply about this that they're willing to move so that they can run for the district their kids go to school. And so what, what is the date that is then determined? And I might have a follow-up question based off of that.
So did you catch that, Mike?
Yeah, I think that was, that's Tammy, I think, asking the question. She's saying, is there a particular date? So I think that there's a, well, I know that the law prescribes a time period for people to pull papers to run. And, and that will be generally in the summer for the November election. So you have to have filled out your request to be a candidate by a date certain. And this will be controlled by the registrar of voters of the County of San Luis Obispo. So when you turn in that application during this window period, that's in effect the date that's going to be used by the registrar because you'll have to put in your address. So if you turned it in at the beginning of the filing period, then whatever address is on that form at that time is what they will use. If you were in the process of moving, I suppose one possibility could be to say, to file your papers to run for that board vacancy, you know, a couple of weeks later, so you could finish your move and then establish the new address. Does that answer your question?
It does, but it does fall right in that time period of the filing period and perhaps have a commitment to move. But as you probably all know, when you move, it takes several months to get these things done. And so I was even wondering, even if they had like a letter of intent or something to that effect.
Yeah, that would be best served to, with a conversation after the primary with the county clerk recorder's office, because they're the ones that really will make that determination.
Okay, and then, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and then keep in mind that you have to remain a resident.
Oh, of course.
The entire time. So you're disqualified if you, if you move out of there.
If you move, like, two years in, would you have to resign from your position?
That's, that's.
As a resident in that area.
Yes, it would be an automatic vacancy, actually.
Okay.
And I would just add, I spoke with the county clerk's office today. I've checked with them several times, and they have not yet determined the dates, the filing period dates for the November election. They need to get tomorrow's election out of the way, but they don't have, they don't have dates yet for the, when the filing period will open. But most likely, it will be typically it's July and August. But I don't have, as soon as, as soon as we know the dates, we'll put them out there. But we don't know them yet.
No, there's a question in the chat about if, if an agency is unable to fill a vacancy, no one steps up. Want me to answer that?
You, yes, you have, you have dealt with that a lot of times.
So the, the County Board of Education is then required to appoint a County Board of Education member to serve in that trustee capacity until such a time that the district can get its house in order and have someone appointed.
And then I think that's where you step in and do a lot of, you know, active, like Mike was talking about, a lot of announcements, reach community, reach out, because it's really important that people within the community do serve on the school board, which is why it's amazing that all of you are here today.
It was, it was mentioned that the school board generally wants to keep continuity going so that they're not five new people every three years and stuff. But every 10 years, they need to adjust the district boundaries. Would it be considered inappropriate to, if somebody was located right on the edge of a boundary, to try to keep that person still in their district? When they do, when they're, it's kind of a please-if-you-can thing, not absolutely, but.
Yeah, so they have to be population-balanced, but they can consider what we call voter choice. So they can consider the incumbents when they're drawing the maps. And that's up to the school board to decide that.
Okay. Yeah, I think you can go on. No more questions in the chat on this topic?
Okay, well, let's go to the role of the board then, Ellen.
Are you ready to start?
We are.
Okay.
I'm, I'm going to cover that. But before we go any further, I'd like to just sort of open it with some general remarks. A school board, or elected school boards, are the most numerous units of elected official and governance in the United States. Their original intent, going back almost to Massachusetts, was to provide guidance and financial oversight. They're basically authorized by state governments, and mostly, in this state at least, controlled by the state. Since Proposition 13, a majority of the districts get their funding from the state of California. Now, this county is unusual because we have three what are known as basic aid districts who actually get all of their finances from property, or most of their finances from property tax. But after Proposition 13 and a variety of other laws that I won't go into, essentially, most of the funding for most of the school districts in the state of California come directly from the state of California. And what that has caused is what I call the golden rule, which is he who has the gold makes the rules, which means that the state has taken over dictating to local school boards a great deal of what they had, powers they had in the past. Now, the other thing about, about service on a school board, President Kennedy wrote, "Service on a school board is one of the most responsible, important tasks entrusted to the public-spirited citizen." But on the other hand, and forgive me, but I'm not going to be hired again anyway, Mark Twain wrote, "First God made an idiot for practice, then he made a school board." So somewhere in between is probably what goes on. Now, all of you have, have seen the musical, The Music Man, right? Remember the five school board members that can't agree on anything until they turn them into, into a singing group? Well, that's, that's kind of what it is. But, so let's go to the next, oh, there we are. The, the most important thing on that, on this slide here is to be a team member portion. No surprise rule. A lot of times, school board members will think, well, if I ask the question before the school board meeting, I don't, should I ask it in the meeting? And the answer is yes, you should, because that indicates to the public that you're in, that you're trying to find out what's going on. There's no, there's no problem in asking a question at a school board meeting. The problem is, is when it's a gotcha question, and you haven't given anybody a chance to research it. Okay, so that's the team member portion of it. Okay, next slide. This is what the main responsibilities of the, the school board is. They hire and evaluate the superintendent. It's important to understand that the only employee of the school board is the superintendent. Everybody else reports to the superintendent. Now, does that mean that the, the school board can't be involved in, in issues? No, they can be, but they need to understand that they don't have direct control over what happens in a school district. And you see the accountability, financial responsibility. But from my mind, as a former superintendent, one of the most important things the school board did was to serve as advocates for the children of their community. They are the conduit back to the instructional program of what the community desires in terms of an educational program. And that's really the core of what a school board should do, which is to provide guidance to administration and teachers as to what the instructional program is. Next slide. Okay, there's, these are, are self-explanatory. Now, I will tell you this. One of the things that this, the school board has to remember is that they're not, as individuals, in control of what happens in a school district. The only thing that they're in control of is when they meet as a board, and a majority of them take action. Now, my favorite story comes from, actually, it comes from Detroit, 1919, when a school board member told the superintendent at that time, he wanted the, to meet with the superintendent every morning before he did anything. And the superintendent replied, "I'll do better than that. I'll come over and kiss you good morning." So that's kind of where we are with that. It, it's no harm in a school board member having direct contact with a superintendent. However, the superintendent, in many cases, will then push that information out to the rest of the board because no superintendent wants to be on a one-on-one with a board member, unless it's, it's a minor thing. Okay, next slide. The next thing you're going to have is the school district governance calendar. And when I said about the golden rule, this is where it really comes in. I had a slide that didn't, didn't translate too well. And it's basically the school board presentations from, I, that, this is a sample from the, from CSBA. And it's a little hard to read, but I also had one from actually San Luis Coastal. And over a period of 12 months, with basically 24, 23 school, school board meetings, there were 23 separate requirements for hearings that had to be done and reported back to the state. So a school board isn't completely in control of its destiny. It has many requirements going back to the state. So if you're running for a school board thinking you can kind of change things, you can to a point, but you have to understand you're a state, a, a, an agency of the state and subject to the rules and regulations of the state of California. As a school board member, you cannot change those things. As an individual, you can run for election in the state assembly or, or write letters to the governor or whatever. But once you take the oath of office as a school board member, you are bound legally by the requirements of the state of California. So, and I understand there are many people out there that want to change that, and that's fine if they can figure out a way to do it. But right now, that's the requirement. Okay, next one. I think we're done, aren't we? Skip to over again. Yeah. Yeah, so at this point, yeah, these are the kind of things that you have to. This is, when I did this slide, this is three months of what's required, not, not the full year. You've got a thing called the Williams Act complaint every quarter, which talks about the availability of quality instruction and facilities. You have what we call consolidated applications, which are learning plans that are tied to money that comes from the state. And then you have to certify your finances, which is a huge responsibility of, of the, of the school board, because the school board's the one that approves the budget and monitors the budget. And then another Williams Act report, then a thing called the GAD limit, which says you can only spend so much money, and if you spend too much, you're not allowed to do it. Never quite figured that out, but that's all right. Nobody else actually has either. Nobody really knows what it means, but we do it every year. Then there's the first interim board, a report of a budget, which occurs in December. And then another one, which occurs in February, all of which are, require a great deal of work from the board. And every month, because the state legislature is busy passing laws or there are court cases, you have to update board policies, which there's like, how many, Chelsea? Like 10,000 of them? I don't, there's a lot of policies.
There are a lot of policies. And usually, you're going to bring them for a first read, a second read, and then you're going to take action.
And then every board meeting is going to have personnel actions because people quit, people are hired, things happen periodically. It may be if you're in an unfortunate situation, labor negotiations can go on all year. You have, the board approves all purchases. Most people don't realize that. And theoretically, they have to approve the purchase order request first, and then later approve what we call the warrant orders. And that doesn't actually work, but we say it does. And then contracts with outside agencies. And then, since the school board is in the business of education, you're going to have various schools coming in and telling you what's going on in, in your school district. So it's, to become a school, school board member takes a tremendous commitment of time. And it also takes a tremendous commitment of, for integrity and honesty. So, all right.
Is it the LCAP now? Is there something that was?
Yeah, there, I mean, I didn't do them all because there's like 23 of them.
That's just. Well, and I was just going to say, you know, we've got some very experienced board members up here. So I was hoping that they could talk a little bit about what they think is so, most important in the board's role for these potential candidates.
Take the share off.
Can I start?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just, I'm so passionate. Patrick did a great job of explaining kind of the big overview. But going back to the board's role, just for a quick second, the focus on what and not how, to me, is such a critical piece. And the board's role is to ask questions. And we, in the end, the superintendent, it's, he's the one who's running the school. We set, the board sets the direction. And the way I was taught was the board operates at 20,000 feet. It's the superintendent who then takes it down to ground level. So if we remember that we're there to set direction and not run the district, that's where we need to be. But that's focusing again on the big picture, that 20,000-foot level. And no surprises, I mean, I think all the districts in San Luis Obispo County have become pretty good at not springing surprises. But I remember a day. But I remember a day, many years ago, before I was on the board, watching a board meeting. Where there was one particular trustee who seemed to revel in springing these surprise questions on staff. And it was one of the reasons that I ran. I thought that was so wrong. So when you have a question. As you're reading through your board packet prior to the board meeting. Call your superintendent, email your superintendent, ask the question. And tell them, I will be asking this at the board meeting. I just want you to be prepared. Sometimes in my district, if a good question is asked by one or more of the board members, the superintendent will email the answer out to everybody. But that's not for a board member to do. That's only the superintendent would do that. Otherwise, you're having a serial meeting or whatever. So that's against the law. And I don't want to take too much time, but there were a couple other things that were kind of on my list. Board responsibilities include actively participating. That doesn't mean micromanaging. That means participating in the meeting. But not dictating what happens at sites, what happens with the programs. Those are principles, or excuse me, the superintendent is, that's their role. Big deal, positive attitude. If you walk into your board meeting believing that everybody there is a good person, regardless of whether they share your opinion or not. You're going to have a much more effective board, and you're going to have a much more, a board that's more able to get things done. So look for common ground in everything. It's our job to express differences of opinion, but it's also our job to learn from each other. And nobody is right. Nobody is one hundred percent right. We all have a piece of right. So it's finding that common ground and working together regardless of whether you agree one hundred percent with what, and that's the other piece. When the board makes a decision, regardless of what your opinion was going into that decision. That's the board's decision and you are the board. Wherever you go, you are the board. Once you're elected, you're the board member. When you're in the grocery store. You're the board member. When you go out to get your newspaper in the morning in your bathrobe, it doesn't matter where you are, what you're doing. You are always a board member and. That's another thing. Call me, email me, we'll talk more about that one. Being respectful, that's huge. Let me see if I've had anything. I'll come back to it. Let me let somebody else talk, but thank you.
Great. I want to piggyback on some of them too, that the one, the one that we're a governance team. Right? This idea that that we serve as a team, as as a collective. And that, and we set policy. So we're not the, as a board member, we're not running the district. It's just like a guard, it's really good to reinforce that. That's we hire the superintendent to run the district, and then we hold the superintendent accountable. Right? For have those policies been met? What do we need to do to adjust that? Listening to understand as we're deliberate with our colleagues, I think is key as opposed to listening to argue back. And then what's really, once a vote's taken, that is the vote of the board, and this is probably the hardest one to do, is then to let it go. Right? As opposed to, but I said this, or I, right, and I, or waiting for the I told you moment. But really, it's like, that's the will of the board, and we move on because in Lucio Mar, we have, I think, twenty two meetings in a year. That's it. To cover the business of the district. So that's not a lot of, lot of time. And if we get caught up and just spin our wheels in this arguing, we're not really focused on the kids and the business of the district.
Any questions on that topic?
Alan was gonna add.
The only thing I would really add is the piece about collaboration. We are a governance team. And so it doesn't work if someone comes in the room, and it's important, I think, for candidates to realize that. If if there's, if someone comes into this business thinking they're, they wanted, they have one or two things that they're going to have occur. That won't happen unless you bring the, at least a majority of the board along with you. So, and if it has to be within the purview of the district, and it has to be aligned with the, with the goals of the of the district and the direction that the board has set. So all those things, but we we really touch on, the board touches on every aspect of what goes on in the district at that high level. By by providing direction, and we are the, we're the what, not the how, and that's, that can be hard. The more, the more invested a trustee becomes, the harder that can be to realize sometimes because we really want our district to succeed. And each of us thinks to some extent, I know what would make all the difference. I just, they just need to do what I say. And that's just not how it works. When we walk in that room, it's all of us as a, as a team, that's a great word, room. We not I, you know, and those things can be challenging at times when they're, because we, I would hope we're all very passionate about. Our advocacy role in public education and for our district.
The other key that is important for me, just as a team member, is that I I want to know that my colleagues have have done their homework prior to the meeting as well. There have been times when I could tell that my, some colleagues have not read their board packet based on the questions they've asked, that were clearly, clearly answered. So we get our, in Lucio Mar, we get our board packets on a Friday in preparation for our Tuesday night meeting. So it's not a lot of time to do the deep dive and then get our questions asked. So there's no surprises at those meetings. But that's, that's, that's what I'm looking for in a colleague on as a board member. At the very least, read the board packet.
You know, one comment I might add to, I think you've gotten some great advice about how to be a good board member. There was one slide that discussed conflict of interest. And the law regarding conflict of interest can be quite complicated, but the bottom line is, as as a person going on to a school board. That you're really there to serve your community. And you, you can't do contracts or make approvals of what may be coming before the board if it's going to wind up personally benefiting from you. Especially if there's a personal financial benefit to you or your spouse or your company, things like that. And sometimes board members are not really thinking about that. So to me, the kind of bottom line word of wisdom is to just listen to your gut instinct. And if there is a contract coming before the school board in which you think you might have some kind of a personal interest. Go to the superintendent and ask for advice prior to the board meeting. So just be very aware of conflicts of interest because they can actually, the Fair Political Practices Commission can levy fines against you as a board member. And it's your individual board member responsibility to ensure that you don't have a conflict. That's not the role of the board president. It's not the role of the superintendent. It is your personal responsibility. So just beware conflicts of interest.
I'll be really, I'll be really quick. There was one other piece, and that is the commitment to ongoing professional development. Once you're elected, you don't know everything, and even after you've been on the board for fifteen or twenty years, you don't know everything. And then the rules do change along the way. So a commitment to professional development is critical. And I know Jim Breschah here at the county office offers some great professional development, as does California School Boards Association on an ongoing. So there's no reason not to do it. So, and I applaud everybody who's here tonight because this is, in essence, professional development tonight as well.
No questions in the chat?
This week can, break or move on?
Do you want to move? Do we have another topic, or you want to take a short break?
Let me just finish this by saying, as a superintendent, what I valued most in from a board member is honesty. I never wanted to be on double secret probation, okay, in terms of something I said or did that ticked somebody off. And I don't know about it until evaluation time. I can't fix, or your superintendent can't fix what he or she doesn't know about. So that communication aspect is extremely important. And I can't stress, I cannot stress that enough as far as from from my point of view. And the other part of it is, as you become a board member, there are people who will help you learn your role. One of them is the superintendent. The other are all your other board members who've been doing it for a while. Because you're not born knowing how to do this, and it's important to go in with an open mind and a willingness to learn. As as she just, as Ellen just pointed out, it's okay to have a single object in mind, but that's not good enough. You're going to have to have more than just one topic that you're going to deal with. As I said, just briefly looking at, there were twenty three required things that you had to do before you did anything else.
Questions from the room? Any questions online? I I don't see any in the chat. Okay, we will take a very short break. We'll reconvene in in ten minutes and give everybody a chance to to stretch, visit the facilities. And then we move right into the Brown Act.
You do need to know it.
Oh, yeah.
Lawyer time.
It's lawyer time?
That's what Patrick said.
Okay, it's lawyer time.
So we're going to start talking about the Brown Act. All new board members, if you haven't heard of it already, you should be prepared to start learning about it. So the Brown Act is the California law whose express purpose basically is transparency. You may have heard of it as the sunshine law or transparency law. I've heard this good expression that, you know, it's described that public officials live in glass houses, and you can only draw the curtains for very specific events. So who does the Brown Act apply to? It applies to legislative bodies. So that means that, huh? Except for the state. And so that means, you know, all of your local school boards and all of you, if you become members. And something that's really important is that as soon as you become elected and before you're seated, the Brown Act applies to you. So I want you to keep this in mind, you know, if you do run and you do get elected. So what does Brown Act require? So with regard to the public, generally, the public has the right to attend meetings and to address the legislative body. On any item on the agenda or any item of interest that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. So with regard to the board, it requires that all actions and deliberations be taken openly and in public. And all of that happens in public unless there is a specific closed session allowed, and we'll talk about what you can have closed sessions for. You know, we talked about providing the board packet, you know, seventy two hours in advance. So all of those meeting agendas and packets have to be available to the board and to the public. And they have to, the agenda has to be posted on the local public agency's website as well. So the idea of this is to be as transparent as they possibly can and to get the information to the people and to the elected officials. So we kind of touched on this, but you know, what is a meeting? You know, we think of these meetings as sort of all of us gathered here today, and that's a meeting. But that's not what the Brown Act says. The Brown Act says a meeting is a majority of the members at the same time and place to hear, discuss. Deliberate or take action on any items in the board's jurisdiction. So way back in the olden days, when the Brown Act was, you know, written, you had to have, you had to meet and have a collective concurrent. So that was like, you had to actually make a decision on something in order for it to be a Brown Act violation. No longer. Now it's just hearing or discussing anything within, you know, any, any majority of the members of the board, hearing or discussing anything within that board's jurisdiction. So there are certain things that it doesn't apply to, and the Brown Act uses language like social, ceremonial, educational. So, you know, all of the board can go to a groundbreaking together. They can attend a conference together. They can do things like that, you know. They often will all attend the California School Boards Association Conference together. So you can do those types of things, but even in those environments, you can't discuss things that are within the board's subject matter jurisdiction, or you will violate the Brown Act. So we, the main meetings that we have, and we talked about your regular meetings. Those are going to be scheduled usually at the organizational meeting. They'll be set out in the year, for the year, you know, Don had mentioned that they have, what, twenty two in Lucio Mar? So school boards usually meet once or twice a month and have those regular meetings. You have to give seventy two hours notice of those meetings. So that's kind of that three days in advance, and those are going to be where, you know, most of your regular business is done. And that's why you're going to want those packets, you know, as far in advance as you can, so you can do your homework and be prepared. You can also have a special meeting, and a special meeting is where, you know, something comes up that needs to be dealt with. And you put that notice out twenty four hours in advance. There's also emergency meetings, and those are very rarely used. Usually, it's where there's a threat to public facilities and things like that. And then those only require an hour notice unless it's a dire emergency and they have to go in immediately. So generally speaking, I don't know, did any of your boards utilize the emergency meeting? Did you use that during COVID?
Everyone did that.
That first day.
Yeah, that Friday, the thirteenth, all the emergency board meetings went into place.
Yes.
When there was a tsunami threat because of Morro Bay High School, which basically is on the beach. Several years ago now.
Yeah, so we used to give these presentations and say, you'll probably never use this, but now we're going to never say never, right? And so there, there is the option for those emergency meetings for those particular circumstances.
Is there another one? Sorry to interrupt. Was Tammy, Mrs. Governor?
No, I was just going to say, I mean, it could be a fire because we've had those issues in my district. And we've had, there was one other instance I can remember several years ago that was just a frightening event at a. They, we do, we do use those.
Yes, and in Northern California, there have been a lot of fire meetings, you know, in those cases where, you know, a school is being burned down and the board needs to meet immediately. So. You know, this is kind of what we were talking about a little bit earlier. You know, you can't avoid violating the Brown Act just by talking to one board member at a time. Or by talking through someone else, right? So this talks about kind of, we call it a linear or a chain meeting. And so that's where, you know, I talk to Dawn, and then Dawn talks to Tammy, and we say, how are you going to run on this issue? Well, Tammy's going to vote this way, and we sort of chat, pass it along that way. That still counts as a meeting, and that's a violation of the Brown Act. Same thing, we call that kind of the hub and spoke, where we have one person acting as the hub, reaching out to everyone else and finding out how they're going to vote, and then passing that information on. That's a violation of the Brown Act. Now, you can talk to less than a quorum of the board, right? So you might have, you know, you two said you'd like to be on a board together, right? So if you were, the two of you could talk together and, you know, talk about your issue, and so long as they don't make it, you know, don't involve a quorum, then they would be able to do that.
So like a seven member board, you could have two, three member chain meetings, but as long as they didn't all.
So long as they're not overlapping and they're totally separate, but as soon as you had one representative.
Pushing it because it's something, somebody's going to say something different to somebody, but.
Yeah, you want to be really careful with those types of things.
Yeah, Chelsea, could you also point out that the the model we see in in state and federal government. Goes completely against this in terms of the caucuses and lobbying and the, so what we see on CNN is not the rule you're expected to abide by.
That's exactly right. I think, I think that was Patrick's point earlier, right? You know, we were operating under some of the strictest rules that you can operate under. You're the ones who are really living in those glass houses where we can't shut those.
Your health will hire standard.
Chelsea, everybody seems to have social media accounts now. Can you kind of talk briefly about how that works?
Yeah, so that's really interesting. The Brown Act took forever to actually address social media accounts. But now they finally have, and they basically said, you know, you're a public official, you can disseminate information to the public, that's fine. But you still cannot deliberate with any member of your governing board. So if Tammy and Donna are on the same board, if Tammy puts a like emoji onto Don's, whatever he said that's related to school district business. That's going to be a violation of the Brown Act. So on social media where you want to, you know, because you're going to announce your candidacy probably, right? So you want to put your platforms out there, you want to say your own opinions. You just need to be really careful when you're talking as a board member and if you're communicating with other board members.
Just, if you just said the like there, but if it's just those two, is that still a violation, even though that you don't have a majority of?
That is what's really funny about this new law. Yes. So if it's on social media.
Because everyone else can sort of be watching too.
I think that's, I think that's exactly why. I think the idea is that they're hearing what's going on between their conversation.
I I read one of the transcripts and it talked, it it analogized it to if two board members took out a billboard together in the. in the community, it's safe to assume that every other voting board member now gets that opinion.
Yeah, and they specifically put the emoji thing into the law. So, you know, the heart or the happy face, and that, that counts as you deliberating with that other board member.
So Chelsea, if a, if a board colleague posts a picture of themself at a school function or an award ceremony, are you not allowed to like that?
So I would be really careful with that. I think, you know, if Ellen posts a picture of her new grandbaby and you like that, you know, that's a different story, right? Because it's clearly outside of the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. But, you know, when we're talking about a school district event, you know, maybe you are making a comment or somebody could at least allege that you are. I don't know, Mike, do we have you on? Do you have any thoughts about that picture liking?
You can take the share off for a second, Ellen.
I, I agree with you, Chelsea. I think it's a place to be very careful because the change in the law with respect to the Brown Act and social media, I think it was Patrick's point, is that you could have a violation without a majority having the conversation if it's done on social media. So it's definitely area to be cautious.
So I think you just have to tell Ellen in real life that you like.
On to anything that Paulie puts on social media.
Yeah, you know, I would be really careful about that. But I also want to be cognizant of the fact that you are going to run these campaigns. So I don't want to dissuade you from using, you know, that platform for your own campaigns.
But I mean, so sending an email to another board member, if it's just two of you, then you're not a majority because that's not social media. But if that gets sent to a third or a fourth, if there's seven, then it's becoming a violation.
You got it, right? So if it's actively on a public platform that someone can see, you know, they're not identifying specific platforms, but they change so often. But if it's a text message, an email, then we just have to be concerned with those serial communications with the majority of members.
My advice would be, if you have to ask yourself, should I do it? Don't. But I will say, I've been around a long time. And I remember in the eighties with my school board in another area in Los Angeles County, they'd have the school board meeting and then everybody go to the bar. And have the after-school board meeting. So we don't do that anymore, but.
That was why they updated the Brown Act.
Pretty much, yeah.
This is where I would argue where personal integrity comes in. Because if I'm on a seven-member board, so I could talk to two other people about an issue. So if I talk to Tammy and to Dawn, and then Chelsea calls me and says, Ellen, I'd like to know what, what you think about, you know, with a very legitimate question, can we talk about this issue? Because I'm not sure how I feel about it. I would have to say, I can't talk to you about this because I've already spoken to two other trustees. So it's really, we're held to a high level of personal integrity and it's really an ethics. And that's a very important piece of what we do. So I, you know, it could be that I could say, well, Chelsea, Ellen, you know, I really want to be able to share this with you, but don't tell anybody we spoke. But that's not how we operate.
Well, and it is, it requires you to actually keep track of who you're talking to. And if, you know, Ellen and I ran into each other outside of the grocery store and had this conversation, then she has to sort of keep that in mind if she's gonna plan to talk about the subject with someone else.
For yourselves as, as potential trustees and those of you that are listening, any of those communications electronically are then subject to the Public Records Request Act. And I can tell you regarding the tens of thousands of taxpayer dollars that have been wasted because elected trustees in this county have not self-governed that conversation. And when it gets to it as a member of the public, your meeting to discuss items should be occurring in the public's purview, not in the grocery store.
Comment, just, you know, the one thing I would throw in here, Chelsea, is that there are some legal ramifications for violation of the Brown Act. But maybe even more importantly, that it's about the integrity that Ellen was talking about and the perception. So there can be a perception of a violation when there may or not, may not have been an actual violation. So I see this sometimes like attending a school board meeting and you finished and everyone's walking to the parking lot and you see two or three trustees hanging out and talking as they get into their cars. Does it look like they're conferring or does it create the appearance of conferring, you know, before the board meeting or after the board meeting in the parking lot? Now, they may be talking about, you know, their grandchildren, but it creates a perception of a problem. So having that sense of integrity important.
Yeah, the cell phones on the dais too, right? If, if Tammy and I are texting and we look like we're talking to each other, and that one, I think, happens all the time.
And those text messages are subject to public records requests.
Right, but Mike, if, are they subject to public records requests only if they are conducted on district-provided devices?
No.
So that's indeed on your personal.
Even on a personal device, you know, basically anytime a trustee's doing a school district business, one of the things that you'll have to work out when people are on the board, and most boards have a protocol, they'll use a district account, even if it's a personal device. So it's your own iPhone, but you may be doing everything on the school district's account. Because anything that you're doing that connects to school district business, you need to make sure it's accessible to the school district. So private phone or a district-provided phone is not the key question. The question is, is it district business? If yes, use a district account. Because if you've used your private Gmail account, let's say, and you're talking with another trustee about school district business, and then let's go to Jim's point about Public Records Act. So now someone asks for all communications between board members about this topic. You're gonna have to go through all of your, that personal email and weed it out. And then you're gonna have to cough up the ones that are on your Gmail account that relate to the school district's business. So in order to avoid all the problem of filtering through to pull up the email that might relate to district business, the best practice is to do personal business on a personal account, district business, district account.
And I don't think we can reiterate that point enough. We, as, as Dr. Brescham mentioned, you know, in our county and I think all over, you know, people are just really interested in the business of school boards, and there are a lot of public records requests. So if you do all of your district business on district email, then the district has access to that and they can search that if there is a records request. Otherwise, like Mike was saying, is you either hand over your personal email to the district to search for you or you've got to go through every single one? And then you've got to sign an affidavit that verifies that you have done that and you've attached all your disposable records.
Sure, and, and give it a little step further there. What that means is we are then retaining you as the attorney to sign off on that after somebody's screening it.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, unfortunately or fortunately, attorneys are involved in these processes a lot to review them to determine whether they are disclosable documents. And you do really help with the efficiency of that process if everybody is all using, you know, a district email or whatever your particular protocol is. Right, I think we're, should we go back on screen?
Any questions in the chat, please post them.
So I think we were gonna talk just a little bit about what the agenda requirements are. And maybe some of our board members can speak to how their agendas are created. Because I think all of you have slightly different processes and I think that they can be really helpful. But basically, on your agendas, you have to have a brief description of every item. And actually, Brown Act says it doesn't have to be more than 20 words, but it has to be enough to make sure that everybody in the public knows what kind of business that your board will be conducting at that meeting. And again, you know, we talked about this, it's got to be posted on the website, it's got to be distributed. You know, if folks with disabilities ask for an alternative format, it has to be made available to all of them. So maybe you can speak to, you know, how your districts create their agendas. If you want.
I think I've heard lots of stories about how other districts do things. And, but in a Tascadero, the board president meets with the superintendent and have the calendar of events that need to happen. And, and that's generally how it goes. If we have requests for things to be added to the agenda, for instance, by the public, they find a meeting where there is, appears to be time and we do it that way.
So. So you go through those 23 things that Patrick was talking about, see which ones.
And then you fill in with the things that are coming up that haven't, that don't fall onto the template.
I know you have a pretty elaborate process too, right?
Yeah, we do. For us, it's the leadership team. So it's the board president, vice president, and the clerk. We meet with the superintendent the, the week before the meeting to set the agenda, to go over the agenda that way to see what, and we take a look at sort of how big the meeting is too. Because we don't, we don't want to be there all night. We have an unwritten sort of policy that at 10 o'clock, we try to be done by 10, or we have to take a vote of the board to go past 10 o'clock.
Yeah, and a lot of your board bylaws actually say that you can't go past 10:30. That's kind of the standard CSBA model.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's it. So we've, but we've got a lot of, because we've got these outside contracts. We've got a lot of facilities, projects going on right now. So there's some that's really time-sensitive. And then now it's June and we've got, it's the end of the fiscal year. So there's a lot of things that have to be approved in this month of June that take priority on getting on our agendas.
Yeah, and so sometimes you might be considering, okay, can we actually do all of this at a regular meeting? Or maybe some of these facilities, maybe, is this something that can be at a special meeting? And maybe we're gonna tack on another special meeting, right?
And part of it is, can it be on the consent calendar versus its own agenda as well?
And yeah, so the consent calendar, is everyone familiar with that is? So basically, we have all of the items of business that are placed on the agenda. And the consent calendar are things that the board needs to act on, but that don't need to be, you know, discussed deeply during the meeting. So the consent calendar will have everything listed. It will have a lot of those purchase orders that Patrick was talking about and things like that that are just part of the, you know, day-to-day business that you would expect, you know, that would be done. And so, you know, sometimes a board member would say, I want to pull this item from the consent calendar and I want us to discuss it. Because if the board's gonna discuss it, then it generally isn't on the consent calendar. And then they take action on the consent calendar all at once.
Whoever's organizing can pick the stuff they think is non-controversial, put it all there. But if they make a mistake and something is, it can be pulled out by a member to be done, spend a little more time on it.
And generally.
But you throw as much in there as you can because that's, then you're.
Yeah, and generally, all the same types of items that go on consent will be on there. So it doesn't happen very often.
Yeah, for us, it's like the field trips, the school trips, the overnight trips will be there. The personnel action, who's retiring is on consent. And then small facilities, projects, anything that with a big price tag, our board wants to talk about it publicly because it's the, it's the public's money. So before we spend $200,000 on something, we feel that should be, have its own item.
Did you have anything to add, Ellen?
San Luis Coastal is kind of known for having a lot of meetings. We typically have two board meetings a month and oftentimes a study session as well, which is another meeting where one, one item, one or two items will be discussed in a deeper way. It doesn't always, typically, there's not action taken on those items, but it's just a deeper meeting. And the board president and clerk meet with the superintendent every once a week, whether there's a meeting that week or not. And our superintendent has developed what he calls his three-meeting planner calendar, which he's very attached to. And, and it's a way of looking, looking out, looking into the future. And the, the first one will be the upcoming meeting and that will be pretty fleshed out. And then the next two meetings will indicate what is required. The required items always appear because we can't work around, you know, we can't get rid of those. And then what kind of space it looks like there may be for other topics. But it's, it is really hard to get additional, figure out how to squeeze additional things in. Our district, I think, as many, typically, there's a school presentation at every meeting. There, the consent calendar, there's adoption of board policies which require first and second reading. There's, we have a bond underway as well. So there's reports, there's a superintendent's report, assistant superintendent's reports. You know, so even without, just a skeletal meeting is long. And then when we throw in the action items, you know, they become lengthy. So it, but it is, so it's a really dedicated planning session to how can we get the business of the board and the business of the district done without being here all night, you know, and kind of anticipating where there might be pushback, where there might be a lot of board discussion, where we might hear from the public a lot. It's just, it's kind of figuring out the best logistical way to manage, sort of a meeting management logistic.
It is amazing how much behind the scenes it actually takes to get the board meetings done. Were you gonna add something, Patrick?
Yeah, I was gonna point out, having, I served in four different districts as a superintendent. Each district did it differently. Some, and, and at least two of my four, I did the agenda all by myself because nobody else wanted to do it. But organizationally, I'd like to point out too, why it seems to take so long in terms of the 72-hour requirement. You only have 72 hours? Well, think about it this way, if you're meeting twice a month and then you're meeting the second and fourth Tuesday, okay? So you meet the, the second Tuesday. Then after the board meeting, all of the minutes have to be transcribed. Then you have to meet with all of your subgroups to, to get ready for the next board meeting. Then you have to meet with your board president or your board president and your clerk to set the agenda. Then the agenda has to be produced and then all of the backup material has to be produced. So essentially, as a superintendent or a superintendent's cabinet, you are preparing for the next board meeting the day after the board meeting you just had. So while it would be nice to give you more than 72 hours worth of notification, it's virtually impossible. So it's, it's a real challenge and it's a, it takes, all superintendents have basically somebody who tells them what to do and they're called their administrative assistant. And without the administrative assistants, probably no agenda would ever get produced. So I just want to point out, there is, it's a huge organizational task. And then combined with that, all of the mandatory stuff. And when I was doing it, I had a rule with my school boards, unless it was a minor action item, no, I, no issue came before the board first time as an action item. It, it was always an information item and then an action item rather than, because if I were a board member, I wouldn't want to be told what I have to, what I have to approve. I want to know about it and then have the information and then approve.
Yeah, and I think that that's the case most of the time, you know, with some, with some legal requirements and some fast-moving things, they will, they will occasionally come just as action items just because that's what the timing requires. But I think that is, that's a great practice where we can do it. I think we got, we've got a couple more slides on this. So the next slide that we're gonna show you just kind of talks about the anatomy of a, of a board meeting. And I think, you know, Ellen's really just talked about it and it kind of plays out differently in different districts. But under the Brown Act, the only rule that really must be followed here is that public comment has to occur before or during consideration of the item. So it has to happen before the board takes action. So sometimes what we do, you know, and this is kind of a sample where, so say you have an action item and you would have a staff presentation on the item. And then the board can discuss and ask questions. Then there'll be a motion by the board and public comment and then a vote. Now, I know a lot of boards like to have their public comment first so that they get to discuss, you know, after the public has already made the comment. But the rule is that the public just has to be required to comment, you know, prior to the board's taking action.
Chelsea, let me just.
Sure.
I want to point out, and this is an important thing to understand. The board meeting is a meeting of the board in public. It is not a public discussion. And so many people attend board meetings and get irritated with board members because they won't engage in a person-to-person dialogue. It can't be done. It's not, when you do that, one, you never get through your board agenda and B, you cannot do that because it's.
Well, and what, what topic are we talking about? Most of the time, if you do that, then what'll happen? You'll violate the Brown Act, right? And so that's why if you've watched those meetings and we have those public comments, you know, the board will say, you know, we're hearing you, we're listening to you, but we can't respond to your comments. And so I think that's a difficult thing when you become a new board member is because you say, oh, well, we are considering that. I want to respond to you and tell you what the answer is. And so that's why boards do operate the way that you see them operate. And that takes a lot to learn. And I think a lot of it, and a lot of the boards have done a really good job of setting those parameters. So making sure that the public actually knows this is why, you know, we're not responding to you. So they, they set that expectation so the public isn't standing there waiting for a response.
So at what point does the board have a conversation between the members to see what they're trying to do and try to accomplish?
If you can go back to that slide. So it, it goes, so a lot of, a lot of boards, you know, follow, you know, Robert. you know, follow, you know, Robert's Rules of Order and things like that, and they sort of set the order. So most of the time, there will be a motion, a first and a second, and then we'll say, any discussion, yes, and then all of the board will deliberate about that. I don't know if any of the board members have any comments about how their boards do it. That's all right.
Well, I, oftentimes, our public comment is all done at the very beginning of the meeting. It's been only a few things that have happened where we've actually had public comment during an actual agenda item. And when that has happened, at least in my district, we tend to do the public comment before we ever touch it as a board. And that way, we're hearing from the public first, before we even open our own discussion or anything, before we make a motion, right?
Yeah, and I think a lot of boards like to do that. And you could have all of your public comment at the beginning, right? Because it is prior to the board's taking action on the item. Now, there are some specific legal requirements where you may have to hold a public hearing on that particular item. So you would open the public hearing, and then allow the public to make comments on that item as well. I think that's good.
Chelsea, can I just add, also, when there, when the staff is presenting, oftentimes, the administration, or the board president, or whomever sets the agenda, will, will cue that up first. Because sometimes, let's say it's a construction project, there's a lot of questions. Well, if the staff makes the presentation, sometimes many of the public questions or comments are answered prior. So it, it is a little bit of knowing your audience and, and reading what is going on in public.
It, it really is. I think that the order that you use for these is really strategic, and it helps you to run an efficient meeting. If you do know your audience and how your board works, then you can use that to your advantage.
Seeing what's been, if it's controversial, seeing what's been in the news or in social media about this, and what the complaints are, so if you have your, the staff answer that to begin with, or at least give answers to parts of it, then there's less that the board.
That's exactly right. And I think you saw this in some of the Zoom meetings, right? Because you would see a lot of people wanting to make public comments, and then the staff would do their presentation, and then you'd have a lot less public comments, because folks had already gotten their questions answered.
With Lucy Amar, we do staff presentation, and then board questions, and then public comment. So a lot of the board questions can then head off to public questions, if the public has been in contact with us as board members. So we can already ask on their behalf a lot of times, too, for the, for the public that doesn't come.
So the public can contact you, and if you guys were on, one person, the public in theory could contact all of you, and that could become a violation with a spoken up for board meetings, but only if they told you about the other one?
Yeah, only if the board replies all.
So the public can all communicate with you, because they're not elected officials, right? It's just a matter of when you all start communicating with.
So, so when they start telling you what the next one said, and the next one, then it becomes, but if they're, if they're telling you, if you're just talking directly to them, and, and okay, that makes it a little easier.
Yes, that's exactly right. Because, you know, you get in a tough position if you tell the public that you can never talk to them, right? Because you are being elected by them. They're your constituency.
Imply all is not your. That, we probably should have just, that, we should have just led with that. Don't rely on all.
That's the key. And then I think, so, we wanted to just cover, and you'll learn all about these, but we did want to cover, you know, what some of those closed session items are. And there, there are a lot of them, you know, some are specifically identified in the Brown Act, and some are in the education code. But you can only be a member, you can only shut those blinds for these very particular reasons. So a lot of time, you'll go into closed session to talk about real property negotiations. You know, not everything related to real property can be done in closed session, but, you know, those negotiations, we're talking about the price and the terms, and you don't want to disclose those, because it would give you a disadvantage in the negotiations process. We can go into closed session to talk about litigation, and that could be current pending litigation, or that can be anticipated litigation. So where the district has a significant exposure to litigation, so that means, you know, someone has actually taken steps and threatened to sue you, then you can go into closed session to talk, you know, and you're having a conference with your legal counsel then. So that's what you do in closed session there. There's all kinds of personnel things that are done in closed session, keeping in mind that idea that a lot of, you know, individual personnel issues are confidential. So we can do, you know, appointment, evaluation, discipline, dismissal, all of those things can happen in closed session. There are a few nuances related to those employees, especially in the dismissal process, but we're not going to get into those here, just be aware that they exist. You know, you're, you're probably going to see if there's active negotiations going on with any of the labor unions, you're going to see a standing closed session item on that, because the board is, you know, setting the direction of negotiations, and they're going to want to be updated on that frequently. And that's probably, I don't know, would you say that's one of your big issues as a board member, is setting the direction and handling negotiations? Because that's probably what folks are communicating with you a lot about, right?
Oh, really? Well, we haven't had a whole lot of public comment around negotiations, at least in my district. We've been really fortunate to have a, a union, two, both union teams that are very transparent, and our district is, and they work well together. But, so that hasn't been an issue. That's the only reason I said no.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't, we don't, members reach out and want to talk.
Yeah, exactly. So a lot of times, that's another, that's another one you want to be careful about.
What is the word exception in personnel exception?
So it's an exception that allows you to meet in closed session. So it's an exception to the general rule that requires things to be done in open session. You know, we also talk about student discipline issues in closed session, because obviously, we don't want to disclose the identity of those kids.
The minors.
Uh huh. And then we've, you know, there's, and this is another one that was used a lot during COVID. You know, there's some public safety issues that allow us to be in closed session as well.
I would point out, in terms of being a board member, it's important to understand that these are confidential issues. And it, if you repeat, there you go. Okay.
No, take it, do it.
A board member who comes and reports to the general public, that which has been discussed in closed session is in bad faith, okay? And there is a temptation, especially among outlier board members, to come in and say, well, you know, here's what we talked about, and I didn't agree. Or, and this becomes especially a problem in labor negotiations, whereas individual board member wants to be a good person, and go out and tell the, tell the labor people, well, you know what, I think this should happen, but here's what, what really happened. That's, not only that, that, that's also a, a labor practice, unfair labor practice. So it, it's very difficult for board members to kind of get there, but that really is an important aspect of being a board member.
Yeah, so it's hard to get to closed session, but once you're there, everything you discuss in closed session has to be kept confidential. That's, that's one of these big cardinal rules. There you go.
Holiday gatherings where the in-laws, it's like, well, what if, like, I can't discuss that?
Well, and I think, you know, Mike really hinted at it and said, you know, this is really about your integrity, it's really important to the governance state. But I'm just going to say, you know, there's also a whole lot of legal ramifications for violating the Brown Act as well, right? We've got civil consequences. And what I'm going to say is probably the biggest deal is the amount of attorney's fees that you can cause on your district, and potentially on yourself, if you disclose this stuff. Because these kind of lawsuits can get very expensive. So you don't even want, as we were talking about earlier, you know, we don't want to even want someone to think that you're violating the Brown Act. Because then they could, you know, make a claim, and then it's got to be investigated. And there's all these pieces, and sometimes it happens, and it can't be avoided. But we want to, you know, we want to keep all of these principles in mind to avoid it to the extent that we possibly can.
But will they disclose, like, the topic of what's, why there's a closed session, but not the details of what's going on, so that they can?
That's a great question. That's exactly right. In the longer Brown Act presentation, you know, we would have talked about that. But yes, you have to disclose what the overarching topic is for closed session. And you also have to give folks an opportunity to comment on those closed session items. Now, you say, like, how would they know what it is? You know, sometimes folks hear that something's going on, and, you know, they will show up and make public comments prior to you going into closed session.
And then we report out any action taken. If we take action on a closed session item, it has to be reported out in open session.
That's exactly right.
And we actually vote in open session. And I would give an example, such as a student issue. We don't use names, you have a number. And regarding student issue, number, whatever, we vote to approve the recommendation or disapprove the recommendation. That's as far as it goes.
And you actually, that's, that's really the point, is you have to say how each board member voted. So if it's unanimous, then you can say that it's unanimous. But if it's not, then you identify.
Is that like, when you think of overrule and expulsion, or something like that, or change with the?
Well, so any final action on expulsion has to be done in open session, usually using a student number. But, but that's right, like, you know, they could just come out and say, what, you know, whatever it is related to a student thing, that they could say that they took action on then.
Chelsea, we actually vote in open session. So it's not, you know, you don't vote in closed session and then report it out. We actually call it out in open session.
Yeah, so that, you're doing it exactly right. You have to vote on those, just because, and that's not a Brown Act rule. That's where all this stuff interplays, is that's an education code rule that requires you to take action in open session for expulsion.
But the closed session, you might need more details that could be personally violating people's privacy, some, or somehow like that, just to.
That's exactly right. There might be some confidential details and information that the board needs to know about in order to take that vote.
How much of legal's time is taken up with the district issues that have to do with the Brown Act? Is it a rare occurrence? Is it only during tumultuous times when there's a lot of concern? What do we typically see with that?
Yeah, you know, I think it really depends on the district. I think we have some districts who have, you know, they, they do that, you know, professional governance training all the time, and they, you know, they know what they're doing, and they kind of, so they don't have to spend a lot of legal time on it. But then sometimes, there'll be just one legal issue in a district that will end up taking up a whole lot of time. So I don't know that I can really give an estimate. I don't know, Mike, if you have some other thoughts on that?
No, I agree. It does vary tremendously, district to district, but it is a complicated law, more complicated than meets the eye. And so it does sometimes generate legal issues. And because of what Dr. Breschel was talking about, there is a lot of, there's an interrelationship between the Brown Act and the Public Records Act. And the Public Records Act almost always requires legal involvement. And, and really does, you spend a lot of money for nothing. I, I, just to respond to your question, I would say that in, in districts that, that are a little more cavalier about following these rules, that's where the issues present themselves. In school districts that really look at this and understand the spirit of law, and do their best, a, a rule of thumb that I used when I was a district superintendent, if it was a question I'd be asking my attorney, it stayed in closed session, it stayed quiet. And, and if it was something that we could talk about in public, then, and so keeping that, and most of my board members would follow that. But it, it was a constant reminder. It, it's a, it's a responsibility that you have to, to enter it. And closed session is not just a time to come together to talk about things you don't want the public to hear. It, it is those defined items in code.
And at that point, when you do that, or if you do that, either your school's attorney is going to be there and tell you to stop, or your superintendent's going to be there and tell you to stop, because that's their job, keep you out of trouble. So, and one other thing, and Chelsea can mention this too, you know, as a board member, you need to understand, if you knowingly break the law, in terms of your duties as a board member, the school district does not have to defend you. You're on your own.
You'll have to take that up with your insurance carrier, and your memorandum of coverage. But yeah, there are situations where, you know, if you do things intentionally, then you aren't covered by the district's policies. All, and we're not getting into this, but generally, if you're acting within the course and scope of your duties as a board member, then you are, you know, you will be defended and indemnified by the district.
Do the right, try to do the right thing.
Exactly.
Be a good idea.
I think that covers the Brown Act, if we want to move on to that board member status.
Well, and you're, that's a perfect segue, your last comments there, Chelsea. So we wanted to do our fourth and final topic to just discuss the different hats that you wear as a board member. And we're identifying three different hats that you might wear, that of the elected official, that of an employee, or that of a volunteer. So as a board member, you don't fall neatly into one category. You're sort of falling into these three separate categories. And we'll just briefly touch on each of those three. So the next slide talks about elected official. So your term in office, how you're appointed, how you're removed, the staggering of the elections, the things that we talked about earlier, your rights as, free speech rights as a member of the board, all of that is really part of your default status as an elected official. But for example, as a board member, you don't accrue sick leave, you don't get vacation, you don't get differential or other kinds of leaves, because you're an elected official and not an employee. So the next slide, where we talk about board members as employees, so this is an example, I'll, I'll go to the bottom bullet first. Chelsea was just talking about, do you have insurance coverage if something goes wrong? And the general rule is, yes, you do, absolutely. And the law is going to cover you, because they want to encourage you to be volunteering in your community. So the, the basic rule is that the, the board, the district as an entity, has a duty to provide you with defense, meaning hiring a lawyer to cover the district, and indemnity, meaning paying a judgment if the school district loses. So the district will have layers of insurance, and you, as a board member, will come underneath that insurance, because you're going to be treated like an employee. So, so long as you're acting in good faith, and you're in the course and scope of your duties as a board member, you're going to have all that insurance coverage behind you. But, you know, listen to my words, so long as. So the renegade board member who's not acting on behalf of the board, that's where the personal risk can come in. So as long as you're acting with integrity, and just trying to do your job, and you're going to the board meetings, you're going to be fine. The only time this becomes a, a serious issue is when you're out there on your own, and not acting as a part of that team, that's where you could get in trouble in terms of personal liability. I also just wanted to mention that board members in most districts, but not all, get a board stipend. In other words, it'll be a monthly payment, and this, the amount of that payment depends on the size of the district. And the amount of the payment is set by law. Because if you think about it, there's kind of an inherent conflict of interest here. If every school district board got to say how much money you, as a board member, are being paid, you're not acting for your students in your community, you're acting for your own personal betterment. So they just put it in the law, and they essentially said, bigger districts get more money per meeting. So in many districts, as a board member, there's a stipend that would be received, and that stipend is considered ordinary or taxable income. So you're treated like an employee for purposes of the stipend. In some districts, but again, not all, board members receive basically the same health benefits as provided to other staff. So some boards just say, hey, you should be volunteer, we're not doing stipends and benefits. Other boards provide both. So that's the employee piece of that. And then our last slide, we talk about the board members as volunteers. And I kind of use the term volunteer, meaning you're just a member of the public. And I'd be curious to, I'd like to hear from the other board members on the panel about what your districts do in terms of, a board member wants to go to a graduation, they want to show up at a school event, they want to go to their own child's school. So in that capacity, you're the same as everybody else. Now, that's the legal answer. But the practical answer may be very different, because when you, as a board member, show up at a school site unannounced, and the principal hears from the teacher, oh, by the way, that new board member is here and walking the campus, believe me, you've just got that principal's attention. And they're not going to be treating you the same as any other person in the community. They're going to want to be dialed in with you. So most boards have protocols about how board members interact with school sites, and how they interact at school events, and so forth. So the, the concept here is that as a single board member, you have no power. Your power comes from teamwork. Your power comes from being a member of the board. So let me just stop right there, and, and just ask some of the other panelists, why don't you all comment, in particular, on this last slide, about your, your protocols for when board members want to attend school events?
Well, at, at our district, we typically have a protocol that we, you know, once again, we can't force people to do everything, but we, we believe that it is kind of the courteous thing to do, that if a trustee is going to visit a school site to advise the principal. That if a trustee is going to visit a school site to advise the principal. And also oftentimes principals will say, you know, that if, do you want to meet with the principal? Is there a particular class you'd like to see? Is there, um, is there something you have in mind that you're curious about? So we'll do, we'll do that. Um, and otherwise for school events, attending an open house, attending graduations, attending, uh, uh, lit, family literacy night, whatever it might be. It, it's just a matter of courtesy to let the principal of the site know that you'll be attending. And they like to introduce, you know, those, they, they don't make a big deal out of it, but the principal will often say, and we have some trustees here with us this evening. Uh, Ellen Schuffer, Don Stewart and Tammy Gunther, thank you for joining us. And then they go on with the program. So there, it is that matter of, of just courtesy. But, uh, I personally would not show up at a school site without, um, without letting a principal know I was, I was coming. It doesn't mean that I need to meet with the principal. It doesn't mean anything like that. But, uh, it's just, it's courtesy because teachers do get, they get a little a, a Twitter. You know, what, what's going on is what, what is this trustee looking for, you know, or they trying to, is there, are we? They, they tend to, to be worried. They tend to be concerned about why we're there, which is unfortunate. I would hope they'd be glad we're there because we're interested. But nobody likes feeling like they're being put on the spot or that they're, they're going to be part of a gotcha moment or something. So it's just, I see it as just common respect, uh, for the work that they're doing to advise them, uh, at least the principal that I'm going to show up.
Would you do that even if you have a child, like if you're going to see your child at school or, I mean, would it like be a double notification or?
If I were going, if I were a classroom volunteer or something like that, then that's between me and the teacher. But if I were going for any other purpose, I absolutely would.
And I observed this this morning. I, I stopped by two of the middle schools in the county because of some of the safety concerns we've had recently. And one of the school board members was there signing in the office with me and our comment was please let the principal know we're here. But we're just, you, you, you know, it was again, it was a courtesy. And one of the issues I sometimes see school boards have to wrestle with is, uh, maybe it's the problem of the good-hearted board member. So the board member may be, you know, a change agent and they want to go on the school site. And they've got their notepad and they're looking in a classroom going, you know, boy, this, this classroom seems out of control. I'm going to make a little note about that. You know, I see some garbage over here. That seems like a problem. I think I'm going to go talk to the janitor about that. And then they proceed to go talk to the janitor about how much trash is out there by the backstop and so forth. So the point is going back to Tammy's comment about what is the board member's role? That's not acting in the 20,000 foot capacity. That's not focusing on the what. That's a board member going onto a school site and getting involved in the day-to-day operational aspects of the cleanliness of the campus or a teacher's, um, preparation. So those are the kinds of things where that, that's some of the reasons why sometimes, uh, site administrators get nervous when board members come onto campus. Because they just want to make sure the board members end up staying in their role while being on their campus.
I will share that if I see anything that I feel I need to be a change agent for, I'm not going to have a discussion with the principal. I'll ha, I'll call up my superintendent and it's like, hey, I was on campus and I saw this, maybe take a look at this because that's the superintendent's job.
I used to, I was on the PTA and stuff for a couple of different schools. And we'd have monthly meetings with superintendent and the board members would pretty rarely, different ones would come to that. And that was really nice, seeing that they cared enough to want to hear directly from PTA's basically sort of representatives of the school. Some degree. And that was, that was exciting to have them around, knowing that they, they cared enough to come and see what we as parent reps thought.
Um, I would just add that not only for me, and I, I have to admit since COVID, I haven't been in the schools a whole lot. But my, my goal was to let the principal know at least a day ahead that I was coming and always inform the superintendent where I'm going to be. So even tonight, I made sure that I emailed the superintendent and let him know that I was going to be here doing this event. Again, like you said, it's just courtesy. But, um, to Mike's slide, board members as volunteers. I think no matter what we do or where we go or who we're talking to, we are always elected officials. It doesn't matter what time it is, 24/7, 365 days a year. And, um, you're under the public microscope at all times. Uh, if somebody approaches you in the grocery store and they want to complain about something, this is one of your constituents. And if you can't talk to them, then let them know how the best way to get ahold of you is. But you know, there's, you're, you're more than a volunteer, even though you may be a volunteer and an elected official. So that, to that, that's where I feel.
Okay, that's a question. Yeah. Um, so you, you, you're at the school for whatever event or whatever. And then a parent or a teacher comes up and says, we need to have this and we need to have that. So how do you respond?
Sure. As Dawn said, you listen and then you can report to the superintendent. But it's always up to the superintendent to deal with any issues, not up to you as a trustee.
And that's with the community too. I try to, and they solve it locally. Have you talked to the principal? Have you talked to the teacher? Redirect it back that way so that it's not my job to go talk to the teacher or the principal. And if they have and they can't, they haven't felt satisfaction. And then I'll usually give the superintendent the heads up. It's like, I had, I had this conversation. So.
And that question happens with all elected officials. I, I mean, myself as county superintendent, the district attorney, the sheriff, the board of supervisors. They get all of those and the appropriate answer is have you talked to those that are directly responsible? And, and I usually say, I'm going to let them know you've contacted me, but you need to advocate that and speak to them directly.
And Jim, you pointed out before, I think when we've chatted that someone from a district will call you thinking that you are in charge of all the superintendents and can you tell this superintendent, you better do this. And that, and that it is that redirection. I see that as an opportunity to let the public know the way these, these systems work. So if someone calls me and says, I don't like my child's teacher, then it's, you know, have you spoken with the teacher directly? If you've spoken with the principal, you know, it is helping to assist the member of the public to know that, that there, there's a process here. And lots of people don't, don't know the process or they're, they're impatient. They think I'm going straight to the top. You know, and they're not sure what that is in all cases. So sometimes it's just letting, letting, understanding the process yourself and then being able to help others navigate it. But to Tammy's point, I will say that, uh, you know, being in a, a trustee and an elected official and, you know, the public person to whatever extent we are, I have never been so self-monitoring as I have the last several years since I've done this. And it's, I hope it's made me just a better relational person because I can't just spout off and say, well, I'll tell you what I think. You know, it is, it is that listening to learn, um, opportunity and, and really trying to not listen to strike back and say, well, I'll tell you the way it really is. But what, um, it, it is a real self-monitoring process. It does take away a little bit at times, I feel from my, who I might want to be as an individual. You know, I don't write letters to the editor of the newspaper. I don't, um, because I know, even if I say I'm Ellen Schiffer speaking as an individual. It could be, you know, other people will say, well, she's on the school board. So this is, you know, they'll tie those things together. So there are, uh, maybe for me at least, I choose to place some restrictions on myself. But, uh, I think it, that that's important. That my, my most important job that I see is being on school board. So I will do all I can to protect that reputation and protect that voice that I have and to do, give it the best. Do that particular job the best that I can, but it, it does come with that, that balancing act.
We're just about out of time, but I wanted to make sure that, that anyone online or in the house still has an opportunity to ask questions of our panel. And you can, you can take your mic off mute if you want. Well, there's, there's a thank you there. We will stay online for a few more minutes just to respond to any questions that people might have. Uh, Mike, any concluding comments you have?
No, just thank you, everybody for being part of the panel. It was a great conversation.
And the county office as well as all of the individuals on the panel, um, I can't, I can't commit to our two attorneys, but, but we can get questions to them for you. Please email if you have that or stick around for a few minutes and we'll try to respond to any questions.
Jim, I will say as a, as a superintendent, and I've been a superintendent since 1978, which means I'm even older than Mike. I've watched the evolution of school boards and it is far more complicated today, especially in the last five years. Then I've seen it in the entire time that I've been associated with schools. Uh, I've noticed that, uh, school boards have become ground zero for culture wars that didn't used to exist. So I applaud anybody who is considering doing, doing this because it's a valuable thing. And a superintendent in a school district can't function.